I want you to read all that.
Yeah.
Yeah. City Committee, Guild Committee. They like you a lot. I understand. We'll call Door County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, September 30th and raise the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Yours. Eighteen present, three absent. They're all excused. Is there a motion to present the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mark Miller and Chuck Brand seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Correspondents, we have a letter here from Ms. Nelson and...
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, go ahead and read it.
To the Door County Board, I am a 96-year-old woman who uses a walker and doesn't get out much. When I need to go out for doctor appointments or to pick up medication, I use the senior bus. I would definitely miss this service if it were discontinued. I would also miss Gary's thoughtful prompt and patient service. If there would be a meeting to count those who don't want this service stopped, please count me in. I seldom get out for meetings or recreation. Thanks for counting me in. Signed, sincerely, Carita Nelson.
Okay, thank you. The unassigned fund balance is also in your packet. Now, public comment, does anybody from the public like to comment? One more chance, anybody from the public like to comment? If not, we'll go to the Administrator's monthly report.
Yes, the September monthly report focuses on where we are on the budget. The Finance Committee met last month and, as you recall, we were about $886,432 over the levy cap. There were several changes that were made by the Finance Committee. They include, and they're bullet pointed in your memo that's in your packet, they reduced departmental operational budgets by about $107,507, reduced CIP cave point parking by $32,000, eliminated an IS position for a savings of $42,017, reduced sheriff's department budget by $24,340 for a scanner, and $27,000 for outdoor storage area. They offset the CIP roads for $250,000 from the DK Fund or the Jurisdictional Transfer Fund, and considered using the unassigned fund balance offset of approximately $398,732. With these changes, the budget met the state levy limit caps, but the Finance Committee then sent the budget out to the Oversight Committees, and we are now, the Oversight Committees added in a few things, one being the senior bus, the letter that was just read, another being a change to that jurisdictional transfer. So we are now at $294,361 away from where we need to be. So the Finance Committee on Monday, October 6th, will have to make some adjustments to get us to where we can present this budget to the public. So please wish the Finance Committee well as they move into this deliberations on Monday, October 6th. That's what I have to report.
Are there any questions? If not, we'll go to the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion by Ms. Riley, seconded by Don City. Are there any corrections or additions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Next item is a special report of Aging and Disability Restart Center, and Patty Peterson's going to come forward in two hours, you're going to take. You can go up the podium up here if you'd like.
I did warn Maureen, it's not easy for me to keep anything short, so I will do my very best. My name is Patty Peterson, I'm the Aging and Disability Resource Center Director, and as most of you know, all of you know, the Aging and Disability Resource Center, which I will now call the ADRC, is a relatively new program. We opened up in 2013. There's been lots of changes since we opened, and the goal of our program is to provide that single point of entry for folks that are looking for long-term care and have long-term care needs. As I look around the room, I think we all have something in common, and it's probably a family member, a neighbor, or someone that we know that's looking for some kind of long-term care need. This is a need that has been around for quite some time, and it is through the graciousness of our county board and our state, because the ADRCs, the state of Wisconsin actually was a pioneer in beginning ADRCs, and in 2013, we were one of the very last counties to have an ADRC. And when you look at the statistics right now, in 2013, we have over 31% of our community is over the age of 60, and in 2030, it'll be 48%. So as you can see, that will be a great increase and a greater need for our office, and I somehow or another got extremely lucky to work with a group of people who have made this new agency work, and there's not a day that we don't come to work. And our goal is to provide great customer service, and really to reach out and develop relationships with many different places in our county, which include hospitals, assisted livings, service providers. That development of relationships makes the experience for our consumers more positive. We find that a lot of the folks that we deal with call our office and are typically retirees. They've come up to Door County to retire, and their families are not usually in the county. So they are looking to our office to help them maneuver what can be a very complicated journey to find out what kinds of things are available in our community. I think what I'd like to do first is let you know that the folks, our target group of folks that we deal with are developmentally disabled, physically disabled, and the elderly. However, we never turn anyone away. So if someone calls and has a question, if we don't know the answer, we will do some research and find out and help whoever calls our office. As most of you know, because customer service is our number-one goal, we have sat as a staff and said, "What can we do to make our program better?" And we were able to move to the senior center this last year, and because we're that single point of entry for our seniors, we were all under one roof. We have adult protective service, and then we have the senior center staff, and then we have the ADRC staff. It's a little tight, but our goal was to provide really good customer service. And the feedback that I've gotten since we had moved over there has been nothing short of amazing. Our foot traffic for the ADRC has tripled. The folks that are coming in are not only there for socialization and for a good balanced meal, but they're also there for resources, and that's what we provide, information and assistance. What I'd like to do now is just introduce our staff, they will do a very short, just a summary, which is hard for us to do, but we can do it, summary of what they do. And I think I'll let Jake go first, because he's going to feel really good, because in our office, he's the only male, and as I look around here, he'll feel really good about giving a little presentation here. So this is Jake, and he's our information and assistance specialist.
Hello. Yeah, so like Patty said, I'm an information and assistance specialist. The purpose of an information and assistance specialist is primarily to provide information to, like Patty said, the elderly or those adults who are living with physical or developmental disabilities, but also, we, like Patty said, provide information to the general public as well. So one of the other responsibilities that information and assistance specialists do is go out and inform and teach, educate the general public on our services, also on the options that are out there for individuals that fall within our target populations. So normally, we get a phone call, somebody might stop into our office, you know, whatever that initial point of contact is with us, at that point, we usually sit down and we talk about the concerns. A lot of times when we first meet with a consumer or their family members, it's just a time and an opportunity for them to really just explain what's going on within their home, maybe within their family, or even just concerns they might have in the future. We also do what's called future planning. And at that point, we do what's called options counseling. So there are a lot of resources, a lot of programs in our community. Oftentimes, if individuals do not have experiences with these programs or resources, they might not know of everything, or they might not have the wide variety of options that are out there. So what we do is we just kind of go through what's available, lay it out on the table. We don't make decisions for individuals, we leave that up to the consumers and their family members, but we can support them in that decision-making process, either providing additional information or exploring alternative options. The other role that we do is also, like Patty said, the ADRC is the single point of entry for the aging resources here in Door County. So one of the things that INA specialists do is help family members and also consumers navigate the long-term care stream here in Door County. The county offers a wide variety of long-term care programs that can help individuals afford long-term care if they have some financial limitations. So again, we kind of help them go about what, you know, here you're, this is where you're at today, here might be your next steps, and then like, you know, and then from that, from those initial meetings or from those, the time that we first meet with the individuals, we then follow up. We can follow up about two to three months, we kind of follow up from time to time and just give a phone call, or they're more than welcome to walk back into our office. We like to keep an open-door policy, which Patty said, as we've moved to the senior center has increased the volume in people who will just walk in to our office, which is great, you know, but it's a lot. And, you know, we do home visits, we can schedule office visits. Really, at the end of the day, we really just try to be that line of support for those individuals that might not have that, might not have a strong informal support, or family or friends, just that support. So I will stop talking, because I am a talker, so I will continue to talk, but I think I should stop now. But, all right.
I would just like to add that our services are free, so anyone can come into our program. The next person I would like to introduce is Jess Holland, and she is our Disability Benefit Specialist. We also have an Elderly Benefit Specialist, and what makes them different is the Elderly Benefit Specialist deals with folks that are 60 and older. Jess deals with folks that are 60 and 59 and younger. So she'll just give you a brief description of what her services are.
So like Patty said, I'm the Disability Benefit Specialist, DBS for short, and I help adults that are between 18 and 59 that have physical or developmental disabilities. Mainly what I do is help navigate the Social Security system. So there are two types of disability programs. There's the program that everybody has paid taxes into, and if at some point they're not able to work anymore, they can apply for disability benefits, which sounds simple, but it's not. There are a lot of laws and technical places to navigate, so I help do that. I've been trained in the technical laws of Social Security disability. And then there's also SSI, which is for low-income and low-asset individuals. So I'll help with applications and appeals, interpretation of documents, because they're, it looks like a foreign language to many people. And then any advocacy with gathering Social Security documents or medical documents that will help their case show that they are, in fact, disabled. It's a really lengthy process, and many people are not approved the first time that they apply, even though they can't work anymore. I also help people navigate health insurance, so either public Medicaid programs or Medicare or private health insurance. A lot of individuals come in, and they've been disabled, and they have a settlement through their insurance company, but the insurance company is trying to save as much money as possible, so they aren't getting the adequate care that they need, so I can help them with that. I also help with other cash benefits, just to stretch everybody's dollar so they can live safely in their homes, because it's hard to figure that out on your own, especially if you have a developmental disability. And like Jake and Patty said, a lot of people don't have strong family support to help them navigate that, or even adequate education to understand what's going on, you know, the documents that they have. Let's see. I also help people figure out how employment will coordinate with disability benefits. A lot of people are really scared to try and go back to work, even if they want to, once they're on disability, but I help them figure that out and how it will affect their benefits. We do a lot of laying out how their financial situation will change, because if somebody wants to work, they shouldn't have, you know, they shouldn't be prevented from that. The goal is to help everybody be as involved in the community as possible. And then also, I help with transitioning youth with disabilities, so somebody who's been going through the school system and receiving services, either through educational programs or long-term care for children, and I help them transition into the adult services. So again, that's very complicated, and parents often have a hard time figuring that out. And this is, that's the point where the children can start making their own choices if they don't have guardians. So there's a lot of the options counseling for the transitioning youth and helping them figure out where they want to go in this new world with so many choices. So, that's it.
Thank you, Jess. And I'd also like to add, she is part of our team, however, she is supervised by an attorney out of Madison, because things are very technical. Next, I would like to introduce Robin Mark. Her, I guess, title is receptionist, but we call her our Resource Data Specialist, because when we walked into our offices on the first day, we started taking phone calls, and we truly did not have a database. We had to build that. It took a lot of time, and through her hard work, she's come up with some amazing resources for our community. So, Robin?
Good morning. Back in 2013, when the ADRC started, we, as Patty said, we did not have a database, and one of my job functions was to build the database. I started with a document that the Senior Resource Center has. It's called the Senior Resource Guide, and they have a lot of phone numbers and names of different resources inside the community. And for example, one of the sections they have is called Housing for the Elderly, and it comprises of this small section here, which is just names and phone numbers of different apartment complexes in Door County. We found through the number of phone calls that we were getting that that was one of the main things that people in the community were looking for, and not just seniors, but people of any age were looking, "Where do I go to live? How do I find an apartment? How much does it cost?" So what we did was we started making some phone calls, and we created a document, this is just one of them, it's called Independent Housing Options, and this covers the whole Door County area. It's split up by Sturgeon Bay and Southern Door. We have a section for Northern Door. We also have a section that is a list of independent people in the community that have rental properties, that they rent out, different agencies and things like that. We split this out, we put down what it costs to rent, what the amenities of the properties are, how many bedrooms, what security deposits are, if utilities are included. And the nice thing about this is, in the beginning, in order for an information and assistance specialist, if somebody came in and wanted to know what was available, they would go into our database, which we had just built, and they would have to look up each one. That takes time, especially with the number of calls, and our calls are increasing. So by creating these sheets, this is freeing up the time that the information specialists would use in the system, where they'd be looking up stuff, they could just go over, grab it, hand it to a consumer, and off they go. A lot of times when the consumers come in, if the information and assistance specialists are busy, I'll talk to them and see what they need, if they're just looking for some information on housing, I'll take them over, I'll show them our resources, I'll give them this, one of our brochures, and a business card of whoever is on duty that day. They go off all happy, they look it over, if they have any questions or need more explanations, then they're free to call back and come and see us. But over the last year, we have built many different documents like this. We have a list of assisted livings, we have a list of people in the community that do home chores, handyman specialists, we, all of that, and we are constantly looking and constantly resourcing or researching what resources are available in the community. And the response from the community, the cold calls that we're getting from people that are, have places for rent, or they've heard about us and they want to know how they can get on our resource list, it's really grown, and it's just become an animal of itself, and it's really been great.
Thank you, Robin. You know, as I stand here before you and talk about what we do, the most important person is the consumer. We are fortunate to have a consumer here with us today, and I thought it would be nice for her to share her experience at the ADRC, so you can maybe get a little bit of an understanding of the impact, as big or small as it can be, how they can walk away from our office and feel like they got the information that they needed and it changed their life. So I'd like to introduce Cheryl Hoppy, who is kind enough to come before us today and talk about her experience. Cheryl?
Thank you, Patty. I don't have all the disabilities that are mentioned, but when they first started out, I'm from, to give you a background, I'm from Milwaukee, and I brought my kids up in there, and then I moved to Appleton to be closer to my children and my grandchildren. And then I got to Door County by reading some advertisement. It's very strange, because I've never been a live-in caregiver to a 96-year-old woman who I had never met, but I met her family, and that's how I got up here. Then, I was 60 at the time, I'm 67 now, and that lasted two years, and then I collected Soc, it took early Social Security and worked part-time. What I'm getting to is that I ended up having some dental problems, and they had to remove all my teeth, and I had, I was for over a year without any dentures. I couldn't afford it, and the people, the people I asked could not, would not take payments. And so, I was real upset one day, and Gary Hanson, the senior bus driver, who's a great friend, as well as the bus driver, as you've all heard, he said he had talked to Patty, and she, they eventually were moving to the senior center, and it's called the ADRC, and I says, "Well, what do they do?" And he said, "I'm not sure." So I called Patty, and she came. "I've used almost all your resources. I know them all. That's why I'm on, I'm always the speaker. If it wasn't for Door County and all your services, I wouldn't be here." But anyway, he says, "Well..." So I called Patty, got me her phone number, and she was in this building at the time, and we set up a meeting, and that was on October 9th of 2013, and she came to my apartment, and she was impressed. I loved where I had just moved to that year, and she wanted to see my decorations and my, everything. And the first thing she did, I had never met her before, and here this young lady. Well, now that I'm...
I'm a senior, haven't you seen?
But, yeah. But, well, everybody now is younger than I am, I feel that way. And she came to my door, and the first thing she did was hug me, and she said, and then we had talked about what I needed, and I don't have the resources to save to get the dentures. But I was without teeth for a year and a half, and I was always talking to people like this, not very social. It's not fun, it's not, I couldn't chew, and she, with her help, and she had let me know certain people I could call, and Graff was one of them, Katie Graff, and she only paid, she can pay $200 a year, and I've used her every year, $200 a year for dental, because Medicare doesn't pay dental. And that's what I had waited. I thought it would pay something. And then she said she, for adults, they have children problems, but for adults, she says, "We can do $200 a year." Well, that was a start, and with Patty's help, we called churches, and everybody, all the churches, not that I even know any of them, or knew, they knew me, all came up with checks for, and I ended up going to, and the only notes I got here is, I ended up going to Affordable Dentures, I forgot, and they needed the money upfront. So between Patty and I, Patty, between all the people, Katie Graff and I, some of the churches, they all came up with the money in full of $500 and some dollars. Now, I had met with Patty, I had met with Patty one more time, and she came to my place, and that was on October 17th. Well, it turns out, I already had used my $200 from Katie Graff that year for getting my teeth pulled, so I had to wait till the 1st of Jan. Well, we went, I did go February 5th of this year, and if you, I can smile, I can talk to you now, I couldn't do that a year ago. Now, mine wasn't as drastic as some of the other people, but what it did to my self-esteem, when I was in grocery stores, I never looked at people in the face, I never, because I had no teeth, and I looked like I was 20 years older, that's what I was told, and... And then I came back after I had my teeth. The next day I had my hair done, and I went to my bank, Bay Lake Bank on the West Side, and they took my picture for thank you cards. And it was a surprise that they had did it on their phone. They took it to Walgreens, got envelopes, and got this blown up for me. And so churches, because some of them didn't even know who I was. But I'll tell you, I, and then I went by Patty. I had my hair done. I had funky tennis shoes on. And I was a different person than when she met me, more outgoing. Now, when I go in the grocery store and I smile and talk, say hi to people, I can look them in the eye, because before I was always very, not bashful. I'm not a bashful person at all, but with no teeth, you don't want to open. So I will cut this, I think I've gone on and on. But if it wasn't for ADRC, which was brand new, and I didn't know if they could even help me. I've used a lot of your programs here. And since I was 60 at the time, and now I've used, every program has helped me, housing, you name it. You've got so many wonderful. Now, maybe they had this in Milwaukee, but I doubt it. And we would have had to travel a long way to get somewhere. But up here, you have everything, and that's why seniors pick. And I wasn't going to stay here after I left that lady and after I quit taking care of her. But if it wasn't for, I'm blessed, and I thank God every day that I live in Door County. It's a beautiful place. My family thinks it's great that I downsized from Milwaukee to Appleton to here. I have met wonderful people. Everybody's huggers here. That didn't happen in Appleton, Milwaukee, strangers, everybody. And I love it. So I just thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you, everybody, for listening.
The interesting part is, I went to the bank after she came with that thank you card. And I wanted to make sure that the person who did this on their own took the picture, paid for those cards. I wanted to make sure that her supervisor at the bank knew what she had done, and that was put into her evaluation. So sometimes it's just going that little extra mile, that we all do things every day. And we do it because we want to do it, not because we have to do it. And that was a good example of how our community work together. I have one, just one quick letter that I wanted to read to the ADRC. "I want you to know how much your kindness has meant to me. I know sometimes this is a thankless job. I want you to know your kindness has made a big difference in my life. And I was waiting on God to send me an angel," which my pastor and I had prayed for the night before. Strange, I think not. May God bless all of you at the ADRC. So we get this every day, and that's why we continue to do what we do, and I think we do a great job. We continue to do marketing, and that's always a challenge, because there still are people in our community that do not know about the ADRC. We are moving into family care, and I'm sure all of you have heard about family care. We don't have a whole lot of the questions that we've had answered yet. I am going to a meeting this afternoon to get a little more information. But I do know that the majority of that workload will be falling onto the ADRC. So sometimes our marketing efforts take a little backseat, because we do have large things like moving to the senior center and family care and additional programs. So you as county board members, and I know our advisory board is always busy doing marketing for us. And we've been on the radio. We've done things to get the word out, but we still hear that people don't know about the ADRC. So anything that you can do on your part to share what we do. And I have some brochures here, so if anyone would like to take some brochures and pass them to a business, because we do not solicit business. Those are, people call because it's voluntary. So we're always there, and you'll always talk to a person, not an answering machine. So again, that goes with our customer service. So does anyone have any questions? Yes?
Hi, Patty.
Hi.
In interest of honest disclosure, I'm on the ADRC Advisory Committee Board. I just wanted to thank you and your team, Patty. You do a great job. Everybody can tell they're enthusiastic about what they do. The letter and the young lady who came today explained how she appreciates the services that Door County offers. You hear that over and over and over again at the ADRC. They get the calls and letters every day. They do do a great job. They also, Sister Bay, they also offer outreach hours up in Sister Bay once or twice a week.
That's right. We just expanded our satellite office up in Sister Bay, because our county is, the geographical layout is kind of challenging at times. We wanted to make sure that people in Northern Door felt as much a part of our programs and were more easily accessible. So we decided, when we moved to the senior center, not only did we start that satellite office, but we also expanded our hours. And what we're finding is that the baby boomers are also working and taking care of their family members. And that's a challenge. So we decided to open earlier and stay open later. And that has really been received well by all of our consumers. But I'm glad you mentioned that. And I know our Sister Bay folks have been very appreciative. And I've gotten a lot of phone calls, actually, about how they are happy that our presence is in Sister Bay. Yes?
I assume that the office in Sister Bay isn't just for Sister Bay residents. It's for Northern Door County.
Absolutely.
Where is it located?
It is located in the fire department.
And what are the hours?
The hours there are 7 until 6:30.
What day?
I'm sorry, on Wednesdays.
Thank you.
We did just start at the community center in Brussels, making frozen meals available. And we, at some point, would like to move further south. But one challenge at a time. We're always told to slow down. We have so many great ideas, but we're kind of known to kind of take a lot on our plate, and we have to prioritize what's important, and that's our consumers.
Yeah, if you decided to come into Bayless Harbor, I'm sure we can find an office.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your offer.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we are working on a new facility, you know. Ben's in charge.
Make it sound like I'm going to put on my tool belt and...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We're in the resolutions.
I wanted to thank the gentleman for calling me a young lady.
First resolution is a funding commitment to Door County Economic Development Corporation. David, you want to speak to that? Sam's back there if you want to, want help from him. He was, anyway. Do you want to make a motion in one second?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2014-79, increase in our funding commitment to the Door County Economic Development Corporation.
Seconded by Kathy.
Thank you. Sam could certainly come up and talk about this if he'd like to. But Door County Economic Development Corporation, as you know, Door County Board was instrumental in forming that many, many years ago. Mr. Zipper was a key component in pressing and pushing that forward. We've always supported them to the tune of about $55,000 a year over the last several years. And they're asking that we increase that slightly. We believe it's about a 3% annual increase each year for the next three years. It was taken to the Finance Committee and discussed by Finance, and we received a presentation from them, and we agreed to increase our commitments slightly each year, 2015, 2016, and 2017. And that's reflected in the resolution in front of you.
Okay. Are there any questions? If not, we'll go to the Voter Board and try that, oh, today. I know that. It's ready to go. Okay, go to the Voter Board.
Oh, no, you're not.
No, we're not.
Oh, we're on, okay. That has passed on a vote of 18 yes and 3 absent, so it was unanimous. Thank you. Next is the approval of the access agreement with Horseshoe Bay Golf Course. Biz, you want to make a motion and explain it?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2014-80, the approval of the access agreement with the Horseshoe Bay Golf Club.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ben. You want to explain it, or?
Well, this...
Eric is here back there, if you want him to come forward.
Yeah, this is a very lengthy agreement, 16 or 18 pages long, with a lot of attorney talk. And I think it'd be appropriate if Corp Counsel Grant, who was very instrumental in writing this, give us a little explanation of the agreement.
Go ahead, Grant.
This is sort of the, well, not sort of. This is the last stage of the process in the county's efforts to acquire ownership of the cave's entrance and then access to the entire inside passages of the cave. The access agreement, as is indicated in the resolution, was a product of negotiation between the county and the Horseshoe Bay Golf Club. And paired to its essence, it allows the county to have access to that portion of the cave that lies under the property that is owned by the Horseshoe Bay Golf Club. We had hoped to have that better defined by way of a survey, but our efforts in that regard were stymied by the recent rain event. I don't know if you saw pictures in the paper, but there was literally water streaming from the entrance of the cave the week that we had intended to go in and survey the cave. So those efforts have been delayed now until next summer. But that shouldn't in any way, shape, or form delay the approval of the access agreement. I can answer any specific questions anybody might have, and Eric may have something to add that I missed.
Has anybody got any questions on it? If not, we'll go to the Voter Board and vote yes or no. That has passed on a vote of 18 yes and 3 absent. Next item is supporting the yes vote on the constitutional amendment of the Transportation Fund. John Neinis, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2014-81.
Is there a second? Seconded by Chuck Brandt. Should I have John Kalogji come up here and explain it for you, John?
He can, I can give you a short one if they got any further questions. The gas tax was passed to use to build roads. The state found a way to take it and use it some other sources, and we're running out of money. This would stop that practice. I enlightened it to the same thing what they did with Social Security. It was supposed to be for our retirement, and they took it and used it for other things, and you know where we are now. But if you've got further questions, I'm sure John will give you all the nuts and bolts to the thing.
John, you want to come up? That was the short version.
I'll ignore that, Chairman City. Excuse me. But as John mentioned and Dan mentioned, on November 4th, the voters of Wisconsin will have an opportunity to constitutionally protect the Wisconsin's Transportation Fund. It essentially eliminate, would eliminate the practice that Chairman Neinis, or, sorry, Supervisor Neinis, mentioned of utilizing funds that are collected both through your gas tax as well as your vehicle registration fees to fund all kinds of things within the state budget. In fact, over the last 10 years, the Wisconsin Legislature has diverted over $1.4 billion of that fund to other types of uses. This whole process started really from a grassroots effort. It required two passages in subsequent years at the Wisconsin Legislature, and the Wisconsin Legislature has overwhelmingly supported this. And if you recall, in 2011, the county board agreed to put an advisory referendum regarding the constitutional amendment. And that advisory referendum was supported in excess of 70% by the voters of Door County, as a reminder. So we're encouraging everyone to vote yes, so that the funds that are collected specifically from gas tax, vehicle registration fees, some other areas, go to fund the transportation system. And as you all know, a good transportation system affects so many things in Wisconsin. It supports the agricultural community, the tourism community, economic development across the board, and of course, number one, safety. So if you have any questions, that's a brief presentation.
Was there a score in a game on Sunday?
I'm sorry, was there a question out there?
I think it was a statement.
For you to realize that John is a rabbit pack, pack, bear fan, bear fan.
Soon to be a Packer fan.
It'll never happen.
No, not after all these years.
So go to the Voter Board and vote yes or no on this. Ready? David, you got to hit the...
David.
That has passed, 18 yes, 3 absent.
Was the vote for whether John should be a Packer fan?
Yeah.
It'll never happen, don't worry. We wouldn't have any fun if he's a Packer fan.
Need somebody to take a shot at him.
Yeah. You make it way too easy. Next is a motion to approve the medical examiner service. Does someone like to make that motion, or do you want Grant to explain it?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Don City. Grant, you want to explain this one?
Yeah, we have for years contracted with Brown County to provide medical examiner services. The intergovernmental agreement for the most recent one is due to expire at year's end. And what is before you is a mirror image of the intergovernmental agreement we currently have, including the yearly cost. And the term of the agreement that's before you is one year, and it expires at the end of 2015.
Susan?
Question? The $45,000 is a standard fee. It doesn't go up if there are many more cases than usual, and it doesn't go down if there are fewer. Is that right?
I'm looking. We used to, and Shirley will be able to explain this far better than I, but we used to have Brown County bill us for everything they did. And what happened a few years back is Door County and Brown County got together and came up with an average, so we could predict for budget purposes what the yearly cost would be, and broke that down to 12 monthly installments. The agreement also provides for additional costs that aren't covered by that annual fee. And those additional costs are, of course, driven by use. So the answer to your question is, it's not a total cost, but it represents an average based on past experience of what our cost is. But there's always possibility, and in fact, likelihood, that there'll be additional cost incurred depending on the number of autopsies and the nature of the services we request.
Okay, any questions? Don, City?
Yes, I have one. Any reason why you do this yearly instead of having like a three-year contract?
We typically have had a three-year and occasionally longer contract. But we, and I use the word "we" generally in northern Wisconsin, have been exploring a regionalized system. And it would seem that the circumstances are ripe for that, perhaps, to come to fruition in the next year. So we felt comfortable doing this this year on a one-year basis. So we felt comfortable doing this this year on a one-year basis. If it doesn't, we will simply extend the existing agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, go to the Voter Board and vote yes or no. That has passed, 18 yes, 3 absent. There are no ordinances to pass. We have an oral committee report. Sue, you wanted to report something?
Yeah. There's been a group, a committee meeting in the last few months, two supervisors on it, Mark Miller and myself, Maureen, and two citizens, Helen Bacon and Seth Wiederanders. And our goal is to come up with some sort of program for citizens who want to learn more about how county government works. And so our kickoff event, which you'll hear more about, but I hope you will consider coming to, is on October 21st at 3:30 to 5:30 and it's an open house at the Highway Department. It seemed like this was something that most people are interested in. The snowplows will be starting to be around and being serviced and prepared and the construction will be finishing up. And I understand that there's a potential for rides on a machine. So our goal was to do this as a kickoff for those who would like to see the department. But also at that, there will be an opportunity, John will give, John Kalogi will give a presentation so they can learn more about how it works. And we will have a survey so that people really, who really do want to know more about county government can help us know what they want from us. And then we will proceed in developing hopefully a further program for those who are interested. So just want to let you know about it.
Okay. Any other committee reports? If not, are there any review of the committee minutes? Anybody have any questions on the committee minutes? Review of the vouchers, claims, and bills? Any questions on any of the bills? Basically, get over by 10 o'clock yet. Okay, the next county board meeting is October 28th at 9:00 a.m. And blue shots will be available before meeting. You can bring your spouse if you'd like. We did that last year. For you that are over 65, it's free, I think. Too bad, Ben. Is there any other questions? And the other thing, did everybody sign that card for Roy's? It's right back there, there's a, did everybody sign it? If they didn't, please sign it. If not, a motion to adjourn. Motion by Don City, a second by Biz Verley. Enver say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.